She was great.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey guys, the problem with the carpeting. We all feel like we're in the living room. We all just get to hang out.
Don't you dare.
I always do. Are you kidding me? I don't think it's a meeting.
I know.
I know.
I could tell.
Good evening, everyone. This is the Committee of the Hall Meeting of the DeKalb City Council, January 22, 2018. There will be public participation, as we have in our meetings. If you do wish to speak to anything on the Committee of the Hall agenda, you're more than welcome to fill out a speaker request form. And for those of you who plan to stay around for our regular city council meeting, you may do that also. Our city clerk, Sue Herman, is not able to be with us tonight. In her stead is our deputy city clerk, Ruth Scott, who I would ask to make a roll call, please.
Jacobson.
Here.
Fanouken.
Here.
Marquart.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
There are no items that are on the regular agenda for our Committee of the Hall meeting, and we have a number of, we have two considerations tonight: State of the City, and then we'll have the FY 2018 Tax Increment Financing Process and Policy Discussion. For those of you who follow us, you'll notice that we have set aside a two-hour time block for the Committee of the Hall meeting, feeling that the second item on our agenda, the conversation on TIF, will probably take a little bit longer, and our regular council meeting then is scheduled for 7 o'clock. I am told that Mayor Smith will speak to the item below, the State of the City, and I felt it would be appropriate for those of you in the audience, and those of you watching at home, and my fellow city consulmen, that I would go to the podium to make that presentation. So give me a minute or two. Good evening, everyone. As an old-time rock and roller, I remember a '60s-era song by Kenny Rogers in the first edition. I just dropped in to see what condition my condition was in. Well, for those of you who just happened to drop in to see what condition our city is in, you've come to the right place. This is the official State of the City, prepared by your '60s-era mayor, and updated to reflect on 2017, and look forward to our new year, 2018. I say "official" because, as some of you may recall, I got myself in a semantic bind when I agreed to do a gig in August for the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce, which billed my address as "State of the City." Now perhaps that event will put a new label on it this next year. I hope so. Regardless, I'm deeply honored to be able to be with you tonight, and armed with a few pictures and a few bullet points. I hope to spend the next 20 minutes or so with my assessment of what's happening in DeKalb: the good and the not-so-good. I thought it might be interesting to share with you what have been perhaps the half-dozen most frequently asked questions I've encountered as your mayor. People ask me, "How are you doing? How are you settling in?" I think I'm doing fine. I appreciate the genuine interest that so many folks have had when they ask that question. As for settling in, I certainly have found this far from being a part-time position. There's absolutely no way I could have learned so much in the past eight months if I had not dedicated myself to being in City Hall virtually every day of the week. Let's look at some of the other questions, and I think some of the answers may become apparent as we roll through the program. What has surprised you the most? They want to know what seems to be the most pressing issues. What do you really feel good about? What frustrations do you have? Going forward, what are the city's major challenges? If there are two general areas in which the city is now focused, I think public safety and economic development probably top that list. We find ourselves with a police department that has been very proactive in not only addressing crime, but in involving many segments of our community in making this a safer place. We're certainly not where we want to be, but we are making progress. We've made it known that the criminal element is simply not welcome here. And something I just learned Friday from Chief Lowry, preliminary numbers show that we may have had close to a double-digit decrease in crime incidents during 2017. Now I know the chief will have more information on that as the final statistics are put together and are released. We're also ramping up our inspections in your city. We have many buildings that are not up to code, and they're not safe. As I have on this slide, the city needs to collaborate, and we're doing so, with DeKalb County, with NIU, and with police agencies in other university communities throughout the state. Decisive action is absolutely paramount if we want to maintain safety for our residents. This city council took such a step when we purchased this blighted property that you see on the screen here, on Edgbrook Drive. Now at tonight's city council meeting, we'll try to get consensus on just what it is that we want to do with it. Our citizens can take great comfort in the superior services of our fire department. Our three-station locations remain adequate for now, but we'll continue to examine how we need to establish an emergency control center for our city. Stay tuned. The recent upgrade on our ISO rating is certainly a feather in our cap. This is one of the things that the average citizen may not know much about, or appreciate just how difficult we've had to work. Is that not correct, Eric? To come up with that ISO rating. I mentioned economic development as another area we continue to work on, and downtown has been a focal point. Certainly, our most visual difference is the Cornerstone project. This John Pappas-owned building sits on property where one of those buildings that had to come down did come down, and with the assistance of TIF dollars, has become a catalyst for even more downtown activity. Just a block east of Cornerstone is where Plaza DeKalb construction is now taking place. This picture depicts a nice before-and-after illustration of the three buildings purchased by Pappas. Apartments, condos, and a Mediterranean grocery store are all in the mix here. Another TIF-related project that is giving downtown a needed shot in the arm is SunDog, the IT business owned by entrepreneur Cohen Barnes, a great example of private and public monies used to take an older building that housed many businesses over the years and creating a multi-use facility that adds value to our downtown business district. We'll continue to work with local and national businesses that see DeKalb as a wonderful locale for growth. Here are a few slides, and I'll run through these relatively quickly, of a few of the new operations that have sprung up during 2017. The Forge Brew House, I understand, is manufacturing beer as we speak, at this new brewery and tasting room in the Sixth and Oak Street areas. I wouldn't be a bit surprised if this new Casey's General Store exceeds their business operations and business projections very quickly. Great location that has bloomed, may I say, where DeKalb Florists and Greenhouse once When Ruby Tuesday's regional franchisee announced the closure of several restaurants, including the one on Sycamore Road about a year ago, our Community Development Division got to work, as Chili's expressed interest in the property. When I attended their ribbon-cutting a few months ago, I met with the managers and asked, "How did the city do with permits and licensing, et cetera?" They could not have been more pleased. Now while we hope that our business community is satisfied with dealing with City Hall, we realize there are times when we have to work together towards a mutual agreement on an issue. Let me say right now: This city will do whatever makes sense to help businesses set up shop, and then we're going to let them alone. Will we expect them to pass routine inspections? Yes. Do we have every reason to expect businesses to comply with city ordinances? You bet. And will the city work closely with them to assure their success? A couple more food and drink-related successes here: the new Sonic on West Lincoln Highway after a refurbishment of an existing building, and the Subway Marco's Pizza, DeKalb Liquor Business near the tracks. Now this project took a heck of a lot longer than what we had hoped, but that sometimes While I featured a few new commercial businesses here, I can report that we continue to work with industrial prospects, the kind of projects that will help the city grow its tax base. So rest assured that we're trying our darndest to grow Park 88. We're trying to grow the land between First and Pearl Streets, and working with the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation and Northern on envisioning how we might get some activity on DeKalb's far west fringes. What a sight for a university-managed research and technology park. All I can report at this time is that a number of parties are interested in exploring such a project, including those representatives from the state of Illinois. Again, stay tuned. Now on to another region that has garnered a lot of attention. It's no secret that the one area that has become a hotbed of some controversy, some crime, and much conversation, it's the northwest quadrant of our community. We now call it Antiglen North, and we continue to focus on its revitalization as we work to improve the quality of life through community engagement. A task force will continue to meet over the coming year, as we ask folks from throughout that neighborhood: residents, apartment owners, businesses, developers, students, to address needs encompassing housing, food availability, transportation, and public safety. I'm satisfied at this point that we're heading in the right direction, and we need everyone's help. So this has been one of the ways we're helping to shape the future of our city. As that occurs, I'd like to report on some examples of how we're paving the way in other areas of our community. We have a number of what I'd call transit initiatives going on. Here you can see a portion of the newly constructed pathway connecting Prairie Park and West Lincoln Highway, running under the railroad trestle. Another great example of public-private partnering with the DeKalb Park District, Kishawaki Kiwanis Club, the city of DeKalb. I'd also be remiss if I didn't mention DSAT, the DeKalb-Sycamore Area Transportation Study, and the fact that we hope before 2018 concludes that we will indeed see a merger of the Voluntary Action Center and Husky Bus Lines. Going to be a tremendous difference for the DeKalb-Sycamore area. Now the other slide here, the other side of this, the other side of this slide, is a promotion citing our effort to increase revenue at our airport through discounted fuel pricing. I walked in tonight, and Tim Holdeman grabbed me by the arm and said, "Did you hear? We did, what, $6,000 of fuel sales?"
Gallons.
Gallons, this week?
This weekend.
This weekend. I'm going to go off-script occasionally, so thank you, Tim. The, you know, the jury is still out on the effectiveness of that initiative, but let's give it some time. We really need to explore with other local communities in DeKalb County. Let me stress that again: We need to work with other local communities in DeKalb County to explore how they might assist us in increasing airport revenue. We need to engage with aeronautical agencies at the state and federal level to see what grant monies may enable us to sustain this great facility. We're working hard on this one, folks, believe me. Okay, if you've heard me say it once, I'll say it again: When it comes down to maintaining the streets in this city, we've been kicking that proverbial can down the road year after year after year. Now our aging streets, not to mention an aging fleet of vehicles, present a challenge to our Public Works Department. Heck, they present a challenge to anyone trying to drive over some of these roadways. So we ask citizens to be patient, as our budgeting process looks at ways to increase revenue, and as we embark on a patchwork maintenance program with a capital P for "patchwork." There's no short-term fix here, I'm afraid. Let's move on, shall we? One of those things that has surprised me over my short term in office has been just how many folks genuinely want to help, with their comments, their criticism, and their willingness to serve on one of our 14 boards and commissions. Kudos to our Finance Advisory Committee for its assistance on our five-year financial plan. Other commissions have helped to devise marketing strategies, weed ordinance strategies, weed ordinance suggestions, and human relations initiatives. To those who serve, I express this city's most sincere gratitude. As your mayor, I still think we can do a better job in this citizen engagement area, and I hope to suggest a few ways over the coming months on just how, from my perspective, we can be more participative, more transparent, and more responsive. Northern Illinois University drew me here in 1961, and with the exception of a couple of years overseas courtesy of Uncle Sam, DeKalb has been my home. Met my wife, Ging, who's still staying awake over here at Northern. We educated our son at Northern, at NIU. We all know how key this institution is to the very vitality of the city of DeKalb. The partnerships that our municipality and NIU have grown over the years is admirable indeed. During the past year, we've continued to work on areas that impact the transit needs of our Com University, Antiglen North, its revitalization, it runs parallel to helping NIU regain the enrollment that it's lost. I marvel at the cooperation I've seen with the DeKalb and NIU police departments. I'm excited about city, the possibility of city Wi-Fi, which will include both Northern's area and our area, and other communication initiatives. We're working hard with Northern. You know, Northern's ingrained in our very culture. Whether it be working there, meeting there, going to school there, or watching a concert or athletic event, ask your friends and neighbors if they're NIU grads. There's a good chance they are. And we need to work hard to ensure that, much like many of us who have chosen to further our careers, our very lives in the city of DeKalb, we need to make this the kind of community attractive to our young people. Now Northern's President Lisa Freeman has pledged her support in collaborating with the city of DeKalb. She's asked others on her team to do the same. Likewise, I will continue to meet with those at my alma mater for the good of our community. Speaking of good, we all enjoy good times, and believe me, this is a great city for entertainment, whether it be at our community treasure, the Egyptian Theater, or at another treasure, Hopkins Park, to listen to our municipal band, or at the summer event we call Corn Fest. I believe we're on a roll on the entertainment arena, and I expect 2018 to be a banner As we conclude this evening, it's apparent, is it not, that collaboration is the key. The city will continue to work with our school district, our library, DeKalb County, our water reclamation district, and Northwestern Medicine, just to name a few. Over the past several months, Sycamore's new mayor, Kurt Lang, and I have seen our relationship grow, and we've agreed to meet periodically to explore ways our two communities can work together, and I'm excited about some of those possibilities. Now what's on our radar? In a few minutes, this city council will discuss our Tax Increment Financing Program. Our FY 2018 goals will be further clarified this Wednesday evening, when our city council meets once again during a special Committee of the Hall meeting to be staged at the DeKalb Public Library. We'll continue to work in tandem with our many constituencies on a myriad of issues, two that I feel strongly about: our code compliance and communication. While I've addressed our work on compliance issues somewhat, the communication piece will be something I'm prepared to work a bit more on. I'd like to go off-script here just a moment. You know, much of what I've shared with you tonight has a price tag attached to it. Due to the length of our budget, and because we spent considerable public meeting time over the past several months on it, I have purposefully not delved deep into municipal finances during this State of the City address. I think I can safely say, despite arguments by some to the contrary, that our current fiscal condition is pretty good. We have a good Finance Advisory Committee that will continue to align with city council. We maintain a strong 25% fund balance, something this council seems resolute in continuing, and we've charged all city departments with the importance of being financially frugal. Now having said that, we need to assure that all of us, those elected and those hired to serve, are aware of the importance of strong financial management. The decisions that we make, day-to-day, as well as long-range planning, are key to our well-being. We'll work hard to see that the decisions we make are good ones. We need to let our citizenry know what's happening in City Hall. We need to address each and every citizen inquiry, each and every citizen complaint, and we need to do it, folks, in a way where we celebrate our successes but acknowledge our mistakes. Along this line, allow me to wrap up the city, State of the City, with a few thoughts on this relationship between City Hall and our residents. I thought a good way to accomplish this would be to share with you tonight four emails that I received just this past weekend. While we don't, while these will not necessarily provide a microcosm of what's happening, they may give you a good idea of the number of issues that we all face. At 5:21 Saturday morning, I don't think we were up then, Ging, but an email from a gentleman who questioned why the city is not enforcing sign ordinances. Later, at 8:57, a note from a prior elected official sharing a concern that we're scheduling too many meetings outside of this chamber, which negates the telecasting of such proceedings. At 9:05, another Saturday email regarding the size of our recently-formed Antiglen Task Force, suggesting smaller breakout groups, and the center said they may prove more effective than convening the large 30-member committee. And just before noon, a response from a resident regarding how this city council during 2015 and 2016 had changed water chemical suppliers that he suggests may have had some relevance to recent media accounts of escalated lead levels in some of our public schools. Now I did respond to all four of those emails over the weekend. In some cases, I attempted to answer a question the best I could; in other instances, I simply indicated that I'd do further research and I would respond. I will say this: As I enter the last 100 days of my first term, my inclination will be to involve this city council up here more directly in my reactions and my responses to those who email or phone, especially in instances where an issue is directly relevant to a specific ward. And I'll also say this, and I've mentioned this a number of times: If I get a call regarding the sixth ward, my first question will be, "Have you called Alderman Verbic?" Alderman Verbic? In the first ward, have you called Alderman Jacobson? And if they say no, I'm going to say, please do. We'll chat. We'll try to get some resolution to whatever your question may be. Finally, as we move forward into 2018, let me flashback 50 years ago. See that up on the screen there, folks? That's from a program dedicating this building in 1968. This building has served us well. For those of us who remember, it had housed offices in addition to our police department. Unfortunately, its construction has limited our ability to properly heat and cool it, bringing with it the probability of asbestos issues. The police shooting range downstairs limits our ability to do much with that space, and the antiquated boiler and chiller presents another potential problem just waiting to happen. We have begun the process of seeing what options there are to address this building, and we'll solicit ideas. We intend to engage an array of sources as we proceed. This could be the prettiest picture we have up there. What do you think, guys? I've gotten to know this building and those who provide service in it during the past eight months. The folks I've come to know even more intimately is pictured right here, your city council. It bears repeating what I have said publicly on many occasions. This is an excellent group of independent thinkers who truly want to do what is best for their wards and for their city. I'm extremely proud to be associated with you. During the last few weeks of December, I met privately with each and every one of these aldermen. We graded each other not only on our individual performance, but on our collective effectiveness as a mayor and a city council. It proved to be pretty worthwhile, I thought. I encourage all of our residents to reach out to their aldermen, this mayor, or our city staff. I believe you'll find this accessible and willing to listen. Because, you know, we were elected to serve you. To be asked to provide this State of the City tonight has been a great honor. As your mayor, I thank you for your attention and invite you to join this group in making the city of DeKalb the very best it can be. Thank you very much.
Good. Dave, you don't want to sit down?
Okay, let's move on to item number two. FY 2018 Tax Increment Financing Process and Policy Discussion. And I'm going to ask community development planner Jason Mitchnick, who is at the podium, to speak on this item. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. The purpose of the conversation that will take place this evening is to discuss several issues related to both the investigation of the new Central Business District, TIF, as well as the expiration of the existing TIF districts. This is both a follow-up to the meeting that we had last year on September 19th, but also the beginning process of us developing a vision that leads to an investment strategy for how to use both the remaining TIF revenues that are available to us now, and then also the ones that will be generated in the years to come. Could have the PowerPoint pulled up. As I mentioned, what I'll cover is, I'll take you through some information that we put together following the September 19th, namely, a summary of the historic expenditures of the two existing TIF districts we have in place. That was one of the main comments that we heard that evening was, we'd like to look at how we've used TIF revenues in the past and what we've spent that on, and can that lead to any insight of how we should spend our future funds. Following that, we'll go through a series of policy questions that are very specific. Knowing that there are several procedures and processes with TIF that are going on simultaneously, and one decision in one area will have an impact in others, it's important for us to work backwards, I think, from developing a vision for what we want to do with the TIF funds, and letting that vision develop and drive the strategy of how we invest that funds and the timing. And I'll cover that as soon as we have the PowerPoint pulled up. Thank you, Byron. As I mentioned, the first item that I'll cover is the TIF procedures. So this will be an update on the eligibility study, and then also discussing the expiration for TIF II, which happens on December 31st of this year, and then covering those historical expenditures, and then beginning to talk through the frameworks, the desired frameworks that the council has in developing an investment strategy. And then we'll get into those specific policy questions, and as we get through those policy questions, I will pause and let council provide feedback and ask any further questions at that time. As council was aware, on December 11th of last year, a contract with SB Friedman was approved to look at the eligibility of a new Central Business District, TIF. Wanted to provide a quick update. With the information that we've provided to SB Friedman at this point, we do think that is likely that the new TIF district will qualify as a conservation area. What that is, is they look at the building age throughout the proposed district, and if more than 50% of the buildings in the new TIF district are older than 35 years, it creates a different set of criteria that have to be met in terms of the state of Illinois eligibility. And we did find that the average age of buildings in the downtown is substantially higher than 35 years. So from that, they have to find three qualifying factors, which we believe that we will. Some of those, for example, would be the presence of buildings that do not meet current code, the presence of blight and deterioration of both infrastructure and buildings, and declining EAV comparative to the rest of the city. The final findings and an actual eligibility report should be available by early March. And then following that, SB Friedman and staff would move into creating a redevelopment plan for the new TIF district. And that is basically where the conversation tonight will lead to, is us identifying specific projects and initiatives that we would like to use the TIF funding for if we were to move forward with the new TIF. The redevelopment plan in itself is written somewhat in a generalized fashion, which allows for flexibility over a 23-year period. It's very hard to determine how and what opportunities are going to be present 20 years from now. So the actual redevelopment plan is somewhat generalized. However, what we'd like to do is, we'd really like to dig deep on some of the projects and initiatives that the city would like to do, and measure the economic feasibility of whether or not the new TIF is going to be able to support those projects on its own, or if it would be required to transfer some of the existing fund balances from the two TIF districts into the new TIF. As well as the redevelopment plan, SB Friedman will conduct a housing impact study. This is basically a requirement if there is a certain number of residential properties in the proposed district, or if there is the likelihood that more than 10 currently-occupied residential units could be displaced from some sort of redevelopment project when that TIF is in place. Because we think there is a possibility of that, it's better that we do that now rather than holding up a project in the future to have to conduct that housing impact study and go through the required notices. At this point, we believe that in April, we would bring an ordinance in front of council that would accept the housing impact and redevelopment plan that we had put on file with the clerk, and we would, at that point, designate the date for the joint review boards for the new TIF district. While all of that is going on, we also have to deal with the expiration of TIF II, which happens at the end of this year. In regards to that, if there are specific projects within that existing TIF district that the city would like to invest in, not necessarily this year, but potentially next year or the following year, what the city is able to do is designate those projects via resolution, and what that allows is the special revenue fund in TIF II could be maintained past the expiration, and funds could be left in that to pay for those projects that are designated. Or if the city would like to designate projects outside of TIF II, whether it be in the new TIF district or in the balance of the Central Area TIF district, that would allow for us to transfer the funds from TIF II to those other TIF districts to fund those projects. So looking at the historical expenditures, I was able to use the past 16 years of the annual reports that the city submits to the state, as well as several summary reports and working documents from past TIF administrators for the city to compile a categorization of how we spent that funds. So looking at the categories, the largest expenditure by category would be debt service at approximately 37 million. It should be noted, however, that the bond and note proceeds that we have received is approximately 31 million, or sorry, 34 million. So the difference there would be the interest that we've paid, and then there is also approximately 4 million left on the 2010 bonds. So that should be accounted for. The next largest category that I'd like to go into a little bit more detail is the distribution of TIF funds to other taxing bodies, which I'll go to in a little bit more detail on the next slide. Following that, the next largest categories you'll see are other capital improvements and infrastructure and city facilities. One of the largest challenges that I had while trying to compile this information was, in past years, the reporting of how TIF funds were spent, specific projects would be filed under a specific TIF account for other capital expenditures, which made it difficult to figure out exactly what those TIF funds were spent on and the type of projects. However, looking historically, I noticed that funding provided to other taxing districts, the surplus distribution, for example, that was filed to that account. So I was able to kind of put the puzzle pieces together and figure out some of those expenditures. But it's likely that the other capital improvements, if you were to dig deeper, would lead to increases in other categories such as infrastructure or private property rehab. One of the things that I would like to point out, as we've talked about the use of TIF dollars specifically to leverage private investment, is how low the category for private property rehab incentives is compared to all the other categories. This has not traditionally been something that the city has used TIF funds for, is to spur investment or leverage private investment dollars. So to get a little bit deeper into the TIF funds that have been distributed to other taxing bodies, the chart there on your left, those are all figures that were taken from those annual reports that are submitted to the state, so that is only for the years 2000 to 2016. Again, as I mentioned, it was challenging to piece out from that other capital improvements line item what was sent to other taxing districts. However, in the 2000 report, which was the first one that the state required, there was a cover letter that noted some historical projects that had been used for, and in one of those bullets, it was stated that there was 5.7 million that was distributed to other taxing bodies for TIF-eligible projects. So that 38 million, 38.8 million, is likely that it's actually 5.7 million higher than that. In addition to that, the $2 million that the city provided to the school district for facility improvements to Clinton Rosette and founders had hit in 16.5 and 17, so that $2 million is also not included. And then also the 16.5 and 17 surplus distributions haven't been accounted for. The reason that I only went through 2016 is because that's the last time that the city had done an annual report that had the finances and an official audit done. So they estimated a total for distribution to other taxing districts from 1987, which is the start of the Central Area TIF district, through 2017 is approximately $49 million, which would make that the largest category when you go back to the previous slide. So looking forward at the available funds, previous estimates that were provided at the September 19th Committee of the Whole was that there is approximately 11.6 to 13.5 million left in available funds between now and 2022 that could be spent on projects. So essentially, what that means, if the city does not move forward with designation of CBD TIF, those are the estimated funds that we have left to spend specifically on projects. The estimated fund balance as of the end of 2017, however, so this is cash on hand, is 9 million, with 2.4 million that's currently earmarked for cornerstone and Plazitecal Phase II incentives, which should take place this year. So approximately 6.6 million is available for immediate use in TIF funds, either for projects or transfers. I would like to note that if the city does move forward with the Central Business District, TIF, that that would impact the revenue calculations that we had for the Central Area TIF. Approximately the value of the district, so that's taking the parcel level data and the EAV total for the proposed district, as the boundary is currently drawn, was 14.6 million. And taking that as a percentage of the whole EAV for the Central Area TIF, came up with about 17.35%, and then used the 2016 tax rate to estimate that the increment there for the proposed district, if we were to pull that out and put that back on the tax roll, would be about 9.4 million, which would ultimately reduce the Central Area TIF revenues on an annual basis by about 1.1 million, is my estimate. So the next couple of slides I pulled from the presentation that was given on September 19th, and I'd just like to revisit some of the frameworks that we discussed about how to analyze opportunities and develop an investment strategy. The three main ones we looked at were maximizing return on investment, so prioritizing TIF projects by the amount of new EAV and tax that would be generated for the city and the community as a whole. As an alternative, the city could look at using TIF funds to minimize future liabilities, so avoiding bonds to fund infrastructure facilities such as City Hall. And the last one is the placemaking, which we use that term quite a bit in community development. That's really identifying and executing on a specific components of a desired vision, such as increased foot traffic and amenities in the downtown. And that vision is really, again, the purpose of the conversation tonight and moving forward is how do we develop that vision and investigate the economic feasibility of it. We also asked the question, how should the return on investment be measured for the city? Would it be simply the increase in EAV or the total amount of investments, the total dollars going into? If the city uses TIF funds to leverage private investment, you're going to have a significant higher number of dollars that are spent in total versus if the city looks at public projects that don't generate or leverage private investment or generate future increment. And then comparing that to what the liability would be if the city was to have to issue bonds for specific projects. And then also looking at things like the increased foot traffic and number of visitors that would come to support local businesses through potentially investments in something like the Egyptian Theater. We could also look at the total number of buildings that we could improve. Could we use the existing TIF funds, diversify them as much as possible, and look at investing and revitalizing as many of the historic buildings in the downtown as we can? And lastly, or we could look at an increased lease rate for residential and commercial. I frame this as if we could get to approximately $20 per square foot in commercial leases and residential leases, is that enough that development and redevelopment would be able to pay its own way? And what is the ramifications if we do get to a point where the lease rate is that high? Are any of our existing businesses going to be able to survive at that kind of expense? So looking at those frameworks, what type of framework do we want to use to analyze the projects? And again, the maximizing EAV, minimizing future liabilities, and then here, I want to touch on placemaking. to touch on placemaking. The city has several documents that we use that talk about developing a vision for the downtown. And one of the first questions that I'd like to pose to council is whether these plans are really appropriate for driving the vision of the downtown. So we have the 2025 strategic plan, and specifically the vision for a vibrant downtown. But then also the EDC this past year completed the implementation strategy. So they went through the economic development projects and initiatives in the strategic plan and prioritize that. And are those really the priorities that we'd like to use to drive the investment strategy for TIF? And then the last document would be the 2013 city center plan, which outlines some specific strategies and policies for improving the downtown. One of those that we used specifically for cornerstone was a needed higher density in the downtown, specifically residential, to create that critical mass of people that are living both daytime and nighttime population to support the local businesses. So at this point, we'll get into policy questions. And as I said, I'm going to ask a question, and then I'm going to pause and let council deliberate and provide feedback and ask further questions. So the couple of ways that I'd like to hit first are short-term policy questions. These are really going to allow staff to answer questions that we've been getting quite a bit from potential investors or existing property owners in requests for TIF funding. One of the things that we've been telling people, because this conversation and this process started in September, and we heard that council wanted to kind of hit the brakes a little bit and hit pause and decide what we wanted to do and develop an overall strategy before we continue to spend money. And we would like to be able to get back to these property owners and investors and let them know whether or not these are viable requests. So the first question would be, should TIF funds be spent on non-transformational or non-comprehensive rehabilitation projects that have a low cost? And a couple of specific examples that I'd like to give is facade grant requests for window upgrades and trim replacement that wouldn't necessarily look at a comprehensive overhaul of the building, such as the roof or any utilities that need to be upgraded or tuck pointing that would protect the building in the long term. That would be my first question for you all.
Okay, we'll open it up to questions on, excuse me, our questions regarding the first question that Jason asked us. Alderman Faduka.
Jason, this first item that you're talking about is kind of similar to what we did with Chilton Sporting Goods, and this is where they replaced their facade, did some new windows. Is that what you're asking, where we think, if we think that's a good use of TIF dollars and proceed with that? I will say upfront, I know the particular change that made in that building, and I would think that that could be a portion of where we go with some of our TIF dollars. Will it be transformational as cornerstone? No. But as part of the upgrade of downtown overall, those kind of things certainly make a difference in the appearance of the overall downtown.
And as the cornerstones and the sundogs, et cetera, of the world downtown become more visual, those who want to participate in making our downtown a better place would then, I would think, be very interested in a program like that. Alderman Jacobson?
That frustrates me to a point.
Okay.
The reason their facade crumbled was deferred maintenance of the owners of the building. It's not, the city's tried to throw $100 million into deferred maintenance into the projects, and it hasn't worked. We did paint the town, we did the awning project, we've done facade projects, we've done window projects, and it hasn't worked. It hasn't raised the value of the buildings, it hasn't raised the value of the EAV, it hasn't raised the rent rates. It doesn't work. You can't force downtown to be successful. Downtown, we've invested $100 million in, and it's still, in terms of its comparables elsewhere in neighborhoods, some of the lowest rent rates in DeKalb. Again, I think that there's much more overreaching policies. Does downtown still make sense? Is downtown, at what point of hundreds of millions of dollars of investment, will downtown be able to hold its own? I think that's what we should be understanding first. To decide how to spend 10 million before you understand what you're going to have to sink in long term to make it successful, the idea, as Jason and I have talked about, of $20 a square foot rentals downtown, none of us will be alive in this room when that happens in DeKalb. You have to see a growth rate in DeKalb that fills all of your commercial and much better commercial zones, including 23, East Lincoln Highway, and everywhere else, that are nowhere near that rate at this point, and the buildings that are failing. Again, to get to that rate, what type of fill-out, build-out in those places would you have to get through first? So now you're incentivizing the downtown at the detriment to the rest of our commercial businesses in the city. If I own a commercial business and I buy it out on East Lincoln Highway in the sixth ward, in the first ward, out on 23 after the TIF expires, why should I invest my money to struggle against businesses that are getting incentives in terms of deferred maintenance? I don't have to maintain my building, I don't have to keep it up, I don't have to do any of those things. The city will take care of all those problems for me as long as I move downtown, and that still isn't an incentive to fill out those units. So again, I think we have some philosophical, much higher-level discussions to discuss. In terms of this one, it clearly has not worked. That's what we've done downtown for the last 40 years. We've thrown tens of million dollars at these projects, and it hasn't worked. And now the question is, should we continue it? It didn't work in the 80s, it didn't work in the 90s, it didn't work in the 2000s, it didn't work, it's not working now, but should we continue it? Again, my answer would be absolutely not. There's just no return on investment there. It hasn't proven to be successful.
Alderman Fagan?
I'm kind of in between both the statements here. You know, if someone bought the building, and even though we've got deferred maintenance on it, if someone's bought the building and there was an integrity to the building, because I don't want to put, like the old term, putting lipstick on a pig here, because you don't want to, I don't want to put a facade up front that looks great, but the back of the building is deteriorating. And I think Alderman Jacobson is bringing this up. And if we can come to a point where, you know, the point of where the building is in integrity, where we can go over and put money into it, Chilton's building, it's still a solid building. But again, agreeing with Jacobson, we don't want to be doing maintenance for people and just paying that out of TIF.
Alderman Norrico?
From a policy perspective, I support downtown development. I think it's important in general for a community to have a center. I think it's important for DeKalb, looking to DeKalb's history, that has long been a part of the city, albeit not very successfully at different times. I think we're starting to turn that around. I don't think that a property owner should be rewarded for not taking care of basic maintenance, but I can see a place for, you know, facade improvements, you know, awnings, you know, some improvements that might be at the level of an owner thought, it would be really nice if I could afford to do this. I can't, I need to do the tuck pointing, I've done the tuck pointing, but this would help my building fit in with development downtown. So bottom line, I support downtown, and I support a level of investment in these facade
Alderman Faduka?
So Dave, I certainly understand where you're coming with, with some of the conditions in some of the buildings downtown. But if there was a building that were to meet some certain standard, you know, whether it's all in code compliance, but it needs a new facade, is that something that we could say the building has to meet that certain standard before we would then do some of these more minor things rather than, you know, transforming the whole building? Do you see where I'm coming from on this?
Yes. And the simple answer would be yes. The reality of our downtown property stock is that none of the buildings are up to code. They were built 80-plus years ago, for the most part, on our main strip, and they were built very poorly. They were cowboy builds of stick building with brick on the outside. They weren't built to last 100 years. And just because they're old doesn't make them valuable. A '76 Charger has value, a '76 Yugo does not. If it was poorly built and there isn't demand for it, just because something's old, and as we've seen in autos, as we saw in the Plaza project, when they're taking off these facades, the buildings are rotting into the ground. They're not in salvageable condition. They need so much structural that it doesn't make sense, even with the public input, to remodel many of our buildings downtown. Again, if it was just a facade issue, we've already addressed that over the last 10 or 12 years. If it was just a walkable path and sidewalk issue, we sunk 30 million into that, putting utilities underground and the infrastructure and the roadways. Again, in terms of things like paint and awnings and even facade, we did those projects. And next to none of them exist five or six years down the road. They're just, they're not long-term investments into buildings that add value to them. When you drive the strip now, and you get out of your car and actually go and look at a lot of the buildings that were repainted in the Victorian style under the Paint the Town program that we paid for, none of them have been maintained. They're all in very poor condition or failing condition in many cases, because again, as much as it's nice to slap some lipstick on it, the wood was rotted, it's wood siding, it's 50, 60-year-old wood, trim pieces, that merely throwing paint on, yeah, it looks great for a year or two. And then year three, it starts to fail, and year four, it starts to look rough. And year five, the investment is gone. You've depreciated it to zero. For what? Without getting really any real benefit out of it. And that's my fear. If there were buildings downtown, there are a few that I think are very solid buildings. There are many or and or most that were either purpose-built buildings or poorly-built buildings that have limited value, no matter what we put into them.
Right. And I understand that. And that's why I said that, you know, if we were to go along, it'd have to meet a certain standard. And I certainly understand where you're coming in. We have seen some of the buildings downtown. You and I have been in them, you know, and we know what it's like. So, you know, I think that the facade grant for some of those things can be a piece of the puzzle, but it's certainly not the end-all, be-all answer.
Alderman Faver?
So I'm in agreement with the first and second ward. I would really, well, you know, I can see, like Ty Pavilion, there was some facade improvements, some improvement, but that was also with an expansion of a business and moving to a different building. I don't want to see deferred maintenance, that'll just answer your second question up there. I don't want to support that. I would support, again, along, like a facade grant, something similar to like bringing the Forge into DeKalb, their tasting room, that was bringing a new business into DeKalb and utilizing the TIF funds for that economic development in the downtown area. So for those, yes, but just a straight-out facade grant, no. Thank you.
Alderman Verbic?
And I would echo the same thing, but, and certainly I'm very supportive of private-public partnerships and matching dollar possibilities and things like that. But first, I would like us to discuss how we are meeting our pension obligations as it relates to TIF and utilization of TIF. How is that impacting our ability to pay down our pensions and meet those obligations? This is impacting that ability, and if we look to try to improve on our credit rating, how we do keep up with our pensions is going to be critical. The other component is internal transfers. I think, again, this discussion is great, but we need to get to the policy of how much are we willing to transfer out of TIF to cover our operations. $790,000, I believe, is budgeted this year for that purpose. Is that really necessary? What do we need to maintain and administer the TIF district? What are those costs? And is that really a true good use of TIF money?
Alderman Jacobson?
Again, this infographic is kind of shocking to realize we've literally spent more on internal transfers and surplus. Again, that's gone to operating costs for the city, generally staffing. We've spent more on that than we have on rehab and incentives in the TIF, the entire purpose of the TIF being there. I realize that, again, that this goes back well before all of our times in this room. The reality is, TIFs, both here and elsewhere in the state and elsewhere in the country, are rarely used appropriately for their intended purposes. And that's the base problem with TIF, that while it's a great idea and it is a great theory, in practice, it rarely is used the correct way on a long-term scale. And we see it here in these infographics, that the reality is, the money just really hasn't gone back into those, it's gone to everywhere else in soft costs, and it hasn't gone as much to the downtown as it should have been. And even if it had, I don't know if it would have changed a whole lot.
Alderman Verbic?
So to follow up in my support of continuing with TIF, it would be, how can we keep that to a minimum? How can we administer these TIF districts to a minimum of costs in operations to maximize the TIF proceeds? And I would like to get to that as a policy question for this council.
Alderman Faver?
I just throw out to go along with Alderman Verbic, there's several policy discussions that I would like to have in terms of using TIF. I mean, just a broad band, and hopefully we'll have a little time later on this evening to talk about that.
Alderman Markwart?
Yeah, I imagine that if all of us had unlimited money and could wave a magic wand, we'd just, you know, go poof on all the buildings and make them nice and do that investment. Unfortunately, we don't have that option. I would love to make every building downtown look nice. I'm not in support of deferred maintenance, so that I'm not in support of. And facade grants often don't, yeah, you don't have the investment in the long-term part. I've been, what I've been so excited about recently is actual transformational stuff that's going into place, that's actually replacing a building that's deteriorated and doing something, building on the infrastructure that we've done in the past, and transforming some of these buildings, using public-private to do that. And I think that's where we should focus our energies, is searching out and getting that private investment and then assisting in that transformational project rather than the facade as much.
Jason, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Mike. Jason, how many short-term policy questions do you have for us tonight?
It would just be the three. I think at this point, we have consensus on this issue.
What's that?
I think there's consensus, at least I've heard consensus on this issue. What I'd like to do is, after we go through these questions, is I'll recap the questions again and then make sure that I'll...
Yeah, my point was, I think there was consensus on that first one.
Yep, I agree. So in that case, I'll move on to the second question, which is, should TIF funds be used to support pure residential or at least mixed-use concepts where there's a higher risk of failure for a commercial component in that development?
Any thoughts along that line? Alderman Fagan?
When I look at this, I'm not, I'm not looking for, obviously, more residential in DeKalb. But, I mean, if we could work out, if somebody came to us where we're bringing the TIF district out, like to John Street, the waterfront, Lincoln Highway... out, like to John Street, the waterfront, Lincoln Highway, the restructuring of that, but not increase residential. You know, maybe bring it in where we've got a commercial and residential. But, and I really don't understand what you're talking about, or a higher risk of failure for commercial. Can you explain that, that kind of question?
Yeah, sure. So I guess the city staff at least has had preliminary requests for concepts where it would be, they have included a commercial concept, however, it doesn't necessarily fit with the development. They're doing it kind of as a, they understand that it would be required in order to get funding from the city. And the concept is either in the space of that development, doesn't make sense, or it's not in a location where a commercial business would likely succeed.
Well, obviously, I wouldn't want, yeah, obviously, we wouldn't want to throw money anywhere that it's obviously not going to succeed. But if, you know, to integrate it together, but again, not more residential. I mean, let's face it, that area that we've talked about does need help. I mean, a lot of that area over there, I mean, there's, my wife and I, we drove through London Place down Augusta. We used to have a place on Augusta we rehabbed, and it looks great. Some of the houses look great, and the other houses just haven't been touched. And again, we don't want to get into the same situation of putting lipstick on a building either. So, I mean, myself, I'd be open to that, as long as there's not more residential.
As you asked that question, let me share with council a couple of preliminary conversations that I've had with some folks who would like to develop what I would call the old St. Mary's Hospital building on Fisk Avenue, okay? Looking for TIF dollars. And staff has been somewhat reluctant to suggest to me that there may be some TIF assistance in that regard. As a long-term resident of DeKalb, I've looked at that building and said, God, we've got to do something. Just, it's not good for that neighborhood. But is that the kind of project that you're looking for as it relates to the second question? And a short answer, and then I want to turn it over to David.
That would be an excellent example of what this question is really posed towards.
Okay, good.
Yep.
I'm glad I was aligned properly there.
Dave, again, I appreciate that Jason is between a rock and a hard place with this one. He's got to be our glass-half-full guy. I constantly scour the blogs. And I watch the You Know You're From DeKalb group on Facebook and all these community groups. And I hear all these great ideas, you know, we would love so-and-so kids' activity downtown. We would love this. We would love, we think it shouldn't be this, it should be an indoor fun park for our kids. Again, that's great, and I appreciate that you want the amenities that you want. For a developer to get involved on a project, it's got to be profitable. Retail at $10 a square foot could never support the real estate taxes and permitting fees and other things our municipality charges to a developer. It's just an impossibility. The reality at $10 or $12 a square foot, the developer could not get financed for the project from the bank because there isn't enough, A, demand in the commercial market here, and B, rent rate, to build a new building up to all the applicable codes, up to the drainage issues, up to ADA, up to all those things. So you have all those costs built in, plus the taxes we already pay here in real estate taxes. And you have developers that come in and say, I'm going to buck the trend and I'm going to build a building downtown. And we've had a developer in the last few years that did it and put it up for rent and got zero interest in the building. All of the tenants in the building are franchises he owns. You look at someone like Cohen, who's putting a lot of money into a building downtown, that will be a prime central downtown location with prime commercial, and no one's interested in the retail space. So then the developers say, how do we hedge our bets? How do we ensure we can pay our bills? How do we ensure we drive a profit for our investors and/or ourselves as investors? And the answer is residential. Because there's always going to be students that need an apartment, and the nicest, newest stuff gets filled first. So we have developers, much like Shadine, that wants to build 600 beds downtown. Yes, that would go toward our goals downtown of densifying the downtown. It would also blight the First and Seventh Wards beyond recovery. The reality is, more than half of our housing in this town is already residential rental. Anytime, for every unit you build, it takes someone out of another apartment somewhere else in this town. Again, that's part of the philosophy of incentivizing the downtown to meet the downtown's needs at the detriment of every other neighborhood in DeKalb. And that's what we've been doing for a long, long time. And until you either raise your heads in beds at the university, which doesn't look like it's coming in the near horizon or near-term future, and/or raise your rooftops within the community to support the national commercial tenants coming into the community, which we don't have right now, all of these things are moot. All of these discussions, yeah, it's great to wish and dream and hope, but the reality in the development field is, we have one or two people in town right now really developing anything, and they're taking a risk because they're local boys, and thank God that they're doing that. And we take a lot of heat for incentivizing those projects because they're still in wait-and-see mode right now. We don't know if those are going to fill out. We don't know if those are even going to be profitable or stay in business for more than a few years. The other developments, the newer developments in town that are $20 a square foot rentals are not. You look at some of the stuff on 23 that's come down in the 13 or 14 rate and still can't get interest from Nationals. Some of them are down in half of that and still can't get interest from Nationals. You look at the Insight Development up on campus, it's in one of the best locations traffic-wise at the corner of 38 and Amy Glidden that you could be at, and the building's empty. They have one tenant left, and nobody's interested in the property. Again, it's fantasy land that we're talking now. The only way we can develop these projects is with significant rental components that we don't need. And we're continuing to follow down the path of how do we do this traditionally? It doesn't work. It hasn't worked. It hasn't worked here since about '08. At some point, you have to change the way you think. You have to go outside the box. And intentionally pushing the development of downtown is killing all of your other neighborhoods. I don't understand that mentality.
Alderman, Noriko.
I don't know what the status of the old St. Mary's Hospital is, you know, in terms of structural integrity and code compliance and so forth. Given the age of the building and how long it's been vacant, I would think that there would be some significant issues in terms of getting it up to code. But I think that there are still some residential needs that need to be met in this community. For example, I think that affordable, interesting community, a true community for us aging baby boomers. I mean, something that would provide services and, as I said, a community-based, internal community that not necessarily at the level of Oak Crest. I think that, you know, that's wonderful and it has a place. But, you know, I'm thinking of something that's more, you know, residential, resident-based, I don't know if that building could be developed for something like that, but maybe thinking of, you know, some different kinds of uses. So I'm not going to say no, you know, just out of hand to redeveloping that site, for example, or perhaps other sites. You know, I'd like to see, you know, get more information about, you know, what their status is, and also really see some creative thinking. It isn't just, you know, young professionals and students who need housing. I'm not going to want to get up on a ladder for too many more years, you know, cleaning my gutters and so forth. So, you know, and I'm not the only, you know, age group or, you know, other, you know, kind of individual. We hear, you know, talk about how people with developmental disabilities age out of, you know, the system. Would there be a place for kind of a mixed community where, you know, some of those individuals could be housed with, you know, other people? And anyway, my point is, you know, let's, we need more information, we need more creativity.
I'm going to take that as a Luke Ward, yes, as opposed to David's definitive no.
Yes, yes.
Alderman, favor.
So I'll jump in real quick.
Sure.
The way that I would answer that is, you know, what's the return on investment? And that's how I would look at any project, is what is the return for us as a city? Is it going to increase EAV? And when are we going to see that return paid back for our investment into it? On a longer-term scale, though, is, as has been mentioned, if we're subsidizing housing, what is the impact to the rest of the community? Are we stealing from one area of town to populate another area of town? And there's no sense in doing that. But if it's, as Alderman Noriko has said, if it's a untapped, you know, group within the city or, you know, a different type of housing community than what we've, that's been presented before, that would be interesting to look at. So I would, but again, question number one is, what's the return on the investment? Start there.
Any other thoughts? Yeah, Michael?
When I look at, say, a pure residential, I would look at what we did several years ago with the DeKalb-Pond-Fisk neighborhood, where it was more of a transformational thing in a neighborhood for a residential area. You take a block and you transform that block by getting rid of the falling-down buildings and replacing them with, you know, we're not talking about mansions or anything, but we're talking about houses that are affordable for people, that also increase the value, you know, property-wise, and are attractive. And if you're looking to do stuff like that near the, in the TIF areas, that would be something I would be in support of for a residential thing. And it's not that you're adding a bunch of residential, but that you're actually transforming some of the residents in our community, their living conditions, and in the, at the same time, you're making it more attractive for people to want to move into that neighborhood and live there. And I think that area has been a success. Many of those people still live there or they've turned over, but it's been a success in there. So projects like that, I would be supportive of using TIF for that, because that would have an increase in EAV for those people.
So what I think I hear here, Jason, to answer that question number two, it depends. It depends on the, on the project. This is consensus. This has not aligned itself with everything that I've heard tonight. David?
Again, I think the other opportunity we should look at exploring is if we're, if these projects are interested in developing, or you can't tell a developer no right now in this climate, how do we find a way to adequately subsidize a project without being a quid pro quo? If a developer comes in and says, I want to build 600 units, that's great, then go into one of our blighted neighborhoods and take out 600 units. That's where we have to act as our force multiplier right now. And I think the value of that would be tremendous. Again, if somebody with deep pockets came in and wanted to redevelop one area, again, we have to sell them on redeveloping two effectively at this point, two birds with one stone. Again, I wouldn't be 100% opposed to even a Shadine plan with 600 units. As I told Dave Patsel when he stood there, take down 600 units and 600 beds in my neighborhood, and I'll be your biggest cheerleader. Again, that's some of the thinking outside the box, that if we're going to have new residential coming in, that's the only way we can do it right now in this climate.
Do you get some consensus there, Jason? Do you get enough?
No, absolutely. Like I said, at the end, I'll kind of go back over these policy questions and repeat back what I feel like...
Let's move forward then.
Just out of the sake of time, I'm actually going to skip this third short-term policy question, so that we can get to the, kind of, the heart of the matter. And note that sometime in the near future, staff will be returning with kind of the outline of a neighborhood reinvestment program or a rooming house deconversion program. So we'll be returning with details and allow you to have a more specific conversation on that. So really, this is kind of the, as I mentioned, getting towards developing that vision so that we can investigate the economic feasibility of it and decide whether or not our existing TIFs or a new TIF district is going to be an adequate tool for us to finance that. This, so the question in itself is, what project should be prioritized in the redevelopment plan for the Central Business District? So separating the two different projects in the two main categories, non-increment generating projects and increment generating projects. And to give you an idea of why we're asking this question, as we go investigate the economic feasibility of the plan, so to speak, is if we know exactly what non-increment generating projects are going to be part of that plan, it kind of, and we can cost those out, it really lets us know how much money we would have to develop in increment through the private investment. So if we can prioritize and we know exactly what non-increment generating projects are going to be part of the plan, it allows us to more easily decide how much private investment we need and whether or not that's actually feasible. So at this point, this is kind of more broad. Is there any specific projects that you would like to discuss further, or is there information that council requires in order to establish priorities so that an action plan can be implemented? So at this point, it's either if you want to discuss specific projects and begin to prioritize those, if you're at that level of thinking now, or if we need to do a deeper dive into individual policies.
I see two hands here, so yes, we do want to discuss that. Alderman, Noriko.
I have fairly strong feelings that we need to do something in terms of City Hall. I don't think it's, you know, fair to staff who work here on a day-in, day-out basis, you know, some of the issues faced. When you, you know, whoever's the first person unlocking the door in the morning, wondering if there's going to be heat, or if it's been over the weekend and it's been really cold, is there going to, are you going to be sloshing through water? I mean, I think it's, you know, at that level. And also, you know, we need to be fair to the residents who are expecting a certain level of service at City Hall, perfectly reasonable, and whether this space is really conducive to providing that service. So above all, I would put the City Hall issue.
Alderman, Fanouk.
Well, you know, one of the things that is on this list is Egyptian Theater. And I, we're still waiting their participation and what their outline and what their plan is going to be. That hasn't been shared since we had the long discussion about the Egyptian Theater a year ago now. So while, you know, I support the Egyptians, I go to events there, they're not doing their part right now other than bringing in more events. They have not come back and shared with the city where they see it going. And I think that's important before we really look to move forward.
Alderman, Fanouk, and if I can jump in, we just received the report last week from the Egyptian Theater. We met with them, had a very productive meeting, and we will be working with them to bring this back to you at a future meeting. So, and allow them the opportunity to present their thoughts on the future of the Egyptian Theater.
Would it be possible, though, even prior to the meeting, that we see a copy of that report so we can read it at our leisure and try and digest it?
We can provide it to you. The aspect of what we were going to do as staff is, we were going to look at the report and compare it to the Egyptian Theater Business Feasibility Assessment and outline the differences. And that's why we wanted some time as staff to be able to understand those key differences in order to present that to you. But if you want to just read what we've received, I would defer to the Egyptian Theater Board because I believe based on our meeting that we had last week, they were looking at making some minor modifications. So I would defer to them to see if they want to make those modifications before sharing it with the council.
Yeah, Bill, and as I alluded to in my comments in State of the City, I made the decision, if you will... if you will, to remove that off of our, our last funding arrangement for, for various agencies.
Right.
Because I knew that the Egyptian was trying to put together that report. So.
Well, I'm glad to hear that they have finally submitted something to us.
Yes, right.
But I, I am anxious for council to be able to read it and, you know, with having suitable time to digest it before we actually begin a public discussion.
Point well taken, yeah. Alderman Verbic?
Yes, I'm very interested in discussing our City Hall options, our space needs, those kinds of things, what the HVAC replacement cost could be to stay in this building. Could the annex across the street be leveraged for space that we need to operate the city? Perhaps partnering with, in another building downtown with some type of, again, private-public opportunity. I'm all ears, but certainly we'd be more hesitant to say utilize funds immediately to build a new City Hall until we would have all of that information in place first.
Alderman Fagan?
All right, with City Hall, I've got a question for you, Jason.
Sure.
City Hall, estimate cost on a City Hall?
New?
14 million.
12 million?
All right, 12 million. Out of that 12 million, how much can we get out of TIF?
That's a really good question. It depends on where it is.
Yeah.
I, I think the best way forward in terms of City Hall would be to allow staff to really kind of do a deep dive in this one and come back at a later date with several different options of how you could approach this with TIF or without. Just for instance, whether if you, if you use the existing foundation and a wall here, potentially 100% could be used for TIF. If it goes in another location, just your soft costs, so your engineering and your, your site plan and, and that kind of thing, so maybe 20%.
Thank you.
Alderman Jacobson?
Short answer, no, 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 no. And Ed, steam up there, no again. Again, you're talking about money that's come out of, a majority of these properties aren't commercial, they're residential. They're the houses in the neighborhoods around City Hall. And you're telling those people, we've taken all your tax money and yeah, we haven't put it into your roads and yeah, you may have some public safety challenges because we can't really afford those. And yeah, we haven't really helped you out on South Fourth Street very much in getting some projects back off the ground to make that feel more like the neighborhood it once was, but we need new offices in City Hall. Again, that's, if I were a taxpayer, especially in the TIF, and I was at one point, I would be furious. The reality is that these projects, the, the limited amount of TIF funds we have have to get their best bang for the buck. A City Hall gets zero bang for the buck in terms of return on investment. A City Hall, even if we tried to sell this building as a purpose-built building, is next to worthless after the 30 or 35 or 40-year timeframe you're in, in the building. We had this discussion several years ago and we had it during the police department discussion. Discussion was, do we want a new cooperative use building where it's City Hall and a police department, or do we want a new police department? And we went through all the numbers of City Hall of what rebuilds would be and what rebuilding on this site, what adding another mirror building in a wing would be with new mechanicals. We did, we went through that process. And the answer that we came back was, we had a 13 or so million dollar debt ceiling and that all that would cover would be the police department. And if we went through with the police department, that was it. That was blowing off our last shot, that until we had that building paid for over 20 years of bonds, that the City Hall was just going to have to be the City Hall we had. We were going to have to make do. And I, I appreciate that it's not the nicest building in the world. I appreciate that we have some mechanical difficulties. I think we could solve, much as I've told the Egyptian Theater, I think we can solve them much cheaper than they believe we can, even for a five or 10-year horizon solution at a value of $600,000 or $700,000 to keep us in the building. Again, much as I'd say to an owner out on a building on 38, if you deferred maintenance on your building, it's not up for the taxpayers to bail you out. And we have, we've deferred maintenance in this building for a long time. Again, because our priority was covering butts and chairs and the money wasn't going to someone that was worried about the facilities and investing into the facility. We've overspent in operations for the last 20 years that has led us now to the deferred maintenance problem of our infrastructure, our streets, our buildings, our fleets. It's a very common thread. It's not rocket science why we're behind on all those things. And until we have that discussion of how you fix the problem and the illness of why we can't invest in those things, TIF can't bail us out of this one. It's never going to, it's never going to be enough. If you added City Hall and STEAM and all these projects, you're talking 70, 80 million dollars of more investment into non-revenue generating things that again, doesn't fix the problems of why people don't want to come downtown. Again, I think relying on TIF is a mistake.
Any other comments on that? Alderman in favor?
So I, that's, that's the problem with even looking at whether we do, if we do another TIF district is it's really easy to spend TIF dollars. And that was one of, one of the problems that I have thinking through this and I've been reading different articles and, and it is completely, you are robbing development in other areas of the city to support a single area. And so it, it's difficult, but then the other solution is bonds or debt and I don't want to do that either.
We maxed out those options.
Right. Our rating is, is, heads declined and so, yeah, it, that's why I say, you know, if we were, before we even approved this, there'd be a lot of policy discussion that very much limiting, I would want to see a policy in place of very much limiting what we spend the money on. Again, I said ROI would be number one, so that's going to limit the, the amount of investment in, in the non-increment generating area.
Absolutely, on the non-increment side, yeah. Any other thoughts on this? Have you received any, any clarification, Jason, on this?
I guess, I, I fully understand the challenge that, I guess, approaching this topic, I mean, this is a very complex, there's a lot of moving parts. One, as I, as I mentioned before, one, one decision in one area has a ripple effect through other areas. And as I was trying to get my thoughts together to, to put together the memo for this evening, I had a desk full of post-it notes and decision trees, trying to figure out what is the common theme and how do I approach, what are the appropriate questions to ask that are allowed, going to allow council to get to that point where we can actually develop a strategy? One thing that I would like to point out in, in regards of looking at the past practices and looking at the future is, is, you know, mistakes of the past are something that we can learn from and we can develop the proper policies moving forward that are going to lead to investment that is going to grow the community. I think the biggest challenge of if you don't, if you don't move forward with the TIF, look at the current lease rates. If you have $6 to $10 a square foot for commercial leases in the downtown, is that really going to drive redevelopment? Is an investor going to come in and look at that property and say, it needs, I, I can buy the property for dirt cheap, but it needs a million dollars to even bring it up to current code. Am I ever going to recoup my, my investment on that? And the answer is no, which is, is exactly why you have a TIF in place. You can't TIF the entire community unfortunately, unfortunately, nor should we. So this is really, again, it's trying to establish that vision so that we can investigate the feasibility economically of can the TIF pay for itself with that? So.
Mayor, if I could, could jump in, just something to consider in whether it's at the, the next meeting. I think we need to have a separate meeting just on the City Hall and ultimately because of wanting to have direction from how to proceed from the council on City Hall, one thing to keep in mind in relation to City Hall, if this building were to move per TIF and if we were to relocate into another building, you could demolish this building and you could flip this entire block to the private sector. So it says non-increment generating projects, but technically depending upon what action you take, there could be some revenue generated. The main thing I wanted to bring up is in relation to this category and something for you to think and I think probably at the subsequent discussion that we have on TIF, is in relation to Egyptian Theater. When you look at City Hall or even Library Square Complete Streets Program, we don't generate revenue as a city, so it's not going to put things back. But I think what the city council needs to look at is when you weigh your decision-making process in relation to Egyptian Theater, they do create additional revenue. They create secondary additional revenue because one of the themes that we've heard and when we met with the representatives from Egyptian Theater last week, they pointed out, and you will hear this, and I know you've seen this and heard from business owners, is the businesses in the downtown do better on the days that there's an event at the Egyptian Theater. So even though I think that's, when your decision-making process, I would suggest you think about what are those secondary benefits on the businesses in the downtown? And, and I'm going to go back to Planner Mitchnick and look at this. The question I have when I look at the, at these questions is then, we've had a lot of discussion on the non-increment generating, but I think if we could receive some feedback on the types of private development projects that you would like included, the transformational redevelopment, the rehabilitation, restoration, what's your mix? And I think you were going there, but I just wanted to make a couple of comments in relation to City Hall and Egyptian Theater.
Yeah, the second component of this, as I mentioned, is, is when you look at the, the feasibility of, of a plan is, you know, what is the increment going to be generated? So when we look at identifying, you know, transformational redevelopment opportunities, what kind of things do you want to see go into that new development? If you look at, as an example, if you were to look at, you know, a couple of buildings as we did with Cornerstone and Plaza, what components of that place-making exercise, what kind of amenities, what kind of businesses do you see leading to a vibrant downtown where people are, can actually want to come and, and live in DeKalb, come back to NIU and be a student in DeKalb because it is a cool college town, it's a cool community to live in? So that's really the, the second component of this is the, if, if we know what non-increment generating projects are included, it makes it easier for us to kind of do the math backwards. But we also need to know what kind of private development you want us to bring in, what is the appropriate mix of residential, what's, what kind of commercial ventures do you want to see? Do you want to see more entertainment? Do you want to see more daytime population in terms of office and professional services and recruiting businesses with TIF? So, I mean, those are kind of the policies that lead to the, the increment generating portion of this. And I actually fast forward to the, to the next slide because a part of this is in establishing the investment strategy is understanding what you're going to do with the existing TIF funds that we have. So as I mentioned previously, we have about six, I think it was 6.6 million that we have available in cash on hand right now in TIF. And as we investigate the feasibility of a, a plan for the central business district TIF, we can look at, do we need to actually seed fund it with existing funds? So transferring the funds from TIF to in the central area TIF over the next few years to seed fund projects. If you look at your first couple of projects out of the gate, if they're rather large increment generators, that really drives the revenue over a 23-year period that you can then use to further the investment and leverage investment over that entire period of time. Or you have to look at the plan as a whole and you have to say, okay, you know, the plan can pay for itself, we're going to have to issue bonds to pay for the entire project, but over a 23-year period, we know that there's going to be increment generated enough that it can pay back that bond series. And that allows you to free up the existing funds to invest in the neighborhoods and the communities outside of the downtown so you can keep the funds in the TIF districts or transfer from TIF to in the central area TIF to invest, investments on East Lincoln Highway or Peace Road. So there's a lot of moving parts, but in order to really kind of figure out and derive that strategy, we really have to establish a vision and what that looks like.
One of the things that I would like to see, you know, some thought put into or discussion is if we're talking about residential projects, we already have Cornerstone and Plaza, but potentially others of, you know, a different makeup, what do the people who live in those residences need? I mean, we've, you know, talked about, you know, the Mediterranean grocery store, but don't they need cleaners and maybe some professional services, you know, a doctor's office downtown? Or my favorite, and, and I don't think they even exist anymore, is, you know, someone to repair shoes and purses. I mean, you know, not that exciting, but, but, you know, maybe you could combine it with a shoes store and, you know, again, you know, what other services? If we're hoping, you know, to attract people who don't necessarily have cars, I mean, those people are going to need to buy shirts and blouses and although I guess they order them from Amazon, but, you know, it might be fun to have something that they could look at. So, you know, think through, you know, in the course of a month, what kinds of things do you buy? And those are, you know, some of the potential, you know, retail services.
Any other thoughts? Alderman in favor?
You know, some of the things that we've, you know, talked about in the past, again, are more of the, you know, foot traffic generators. So if there were, like, the Egyptian Theater is one that does bring downtown a lot of people, there are restaurants, as we have more of these people living downtown through the, the other residential projects that we have, potentially a hotel downtown. I, those are the, those are the things that I would love to see downtown. Again, I'm, I'm still going back and, you know, trying to decide, is the TIF district the way to go? Or is there, you know, localized, you know, bond raising and things like that for individual neighborhoods or what is going, what would be the best approach to get what we need done?
Yeah, Alderman Norrico?
And I, I had some other ideas for, you know, if we want to promote the idea of the arts corridor and, you know, art activities, maybe some kind of music studio downtown. So people, you know, at varying levels and, you know, varying types of music that they're interested in would have practice and recording and lesson space.
I have a couple of observations and some of the backup material that was sent out for City Council and I noticed there were minutes of meetings that were held in various segments of our community in 2016. What kind of, what kind of response has that generated from, from council or staff? Is that a, you understand the question? In other words, we had a lot of suggestions from what Ward 5, I'm not picking on you, Kate, I'm just saying that there was one on, on Ward 5. There was one, some, a couple of other places. What, what have we done with that? And, and my second question, I guess, is I think, from what I gathered, you want to, you want an indication, some consensus from this council tonight on whether or not we want to discuss this whole arena of shall we have a new TIF? Is that correct?
Yeah.
I, I don't know if we're going to be able to do that tonight, but why don't you answer my first question?
Sure.
If you, if you could, or at least address it, Jason.
Sure. So the, one of the, of those word meetings, one of the topics that came out of that was, again, the Elwood Historic Project or Plan that came forward and the rooming house deconversion. That was one of the things that was discussed and as I mentioned, we're going to be bringing a program outline back to council in, in the future. In those conversations, there was, I wouldn't say there was consensus amongst, you know, those residents that came and spoke. You would hear anything from use TIF to invest into infrastructure to, you know, trees and using it to, on private residential to improve my neighbor's yard and the way that their house looks. So I wouldn't say that there was general consensus in those meetings for anything other than really the, the rooming house deconversion program was the most common thing, which again, we'll be bringing back. But I think using those notes to really find a funnel into the, the larger policy of how you'd like to use TIF. Like I said, one of the things that came out was, was fixing sidewalks and streets. If that's something that you feel and staff has recommended that you need to look for alternative revenue sources specifically for infrastructure so that you can free up TIF to be invested and leverage private, private dollars. In regards to the, the new TIF district, we, we wrote this and we're moving forward as planned, assuming that we, we should carry through with, we do find out that we meet the eligibility requirements, that we're going to go through that process. I would say that if council feels otherwise at this point, that it's imperative that we know. we know sooner rather than later, so we don't continue down this path spending money with a consultant if we're not going to adopt the new TIF district.
Absolutely. You're right on. Now, having said that, we've spent nearly 90 minutes on this tonight, and I don't want to go beyond much more unless it's the pleasure of the City Council that we do that. I'd like to get our City Council meeting starting, our City Council meeting starting at, at seven. Or would it be, are we going to gain something if we, if we continue this discussion at another time? David?
I, I have one final comment based on Jason's last comment. I think it's pretty clear that it's not a foregone conclusion that if we qualify, that the council is going to decide to continue or start a new TIF. I, I don't think that decision's anywhere near close to being made. So if that's the assumption by staff, from what I've heard from other council members, several people are on the fence, and some people are outright no's, I, I would not operate on that assumption. I think the, the direction given was to go ahead and engage the consultant and find out whether or not it could be done. We have not had a substantive discussion of whether it should be done.
Well, my suggestion is, is then that would be the extension of this meeting. Does that make sense to you, to staff?
Absolutely.
Jason, a big pardon?
Yeah, absolutely. What I would, what I would request then is, if we were to bring that back as a, as the next item of discussion, is what information does council request from staff to prepare for that conversation so that you can look at, you know, all the factors and make a decision?
Alderman Verbic?
Well, I wanted to say thank you. Great job on framing all of these details and I think really helping us through a discussion that is, requires a lot of thought. Certainly, my goals for any TIF if we proceed would be to optimize private investment. How do we do that? How do we grow revenue in our city responsibly? So I look forward to this, the discussion and whether or not a TIF is viable. On that note, I think Alderman Favor mentioned policy decisions, as did I, to say, let's have those discussions about what is the impact on pension? What is really required from an operational transfer standpoint? And look forward to that.
And I think one of the reasons that we're being asked to make a decision here is something that our Community Development Department told us early on, and that is that, the last I heard is that we need, as a municipality, to make a decision on whether or not we want to re-TIF or whether or not we want to do a new TIF based on what may or may not, may not happen in Springfield. Is that still a?
Yes, that, that is correct. And, and providing the, the feedback on whether or not council would support the TIF designation is really important because if there is a multi-week delay, from my understanding is if they do pass that legislation and we haven't hit a specific benchmark in the process, that we would lose the opportunity if we were to decide down the road that we actually did want to move forward. So I guess, and the interim staff will continue to work with the consultant and on walking down that path and investigating, and will come back with the required information that council requested. So as long as I, I'll just make sure we have consensus is, you'd like to have as the next point of discussion whether or not we want to move forward with the new TIF district, and you want us to discuss how that would impact our ability to pay our pension obligations, and also potential policy recommendations that would lead to preventative measures for misuse of TIF funds in the future? Are there any other pieces of information from the remainder of council?
Does that, does that make sense to council in terms of what Jason just said?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I echo what Mike said, and that is, thank you, Jason. And I, I hope, I hope you've gotten some sense of what this council wants to do moving forward, because, I mean, that's what you've asked for, that's what we're trying to do.
I think we'll get there.
We certainly don't have total agreement on everything, but, you know, if, if we, if all parties feel that we're moving forward in part and parcel of that process is to have another meeting, I would say let's do, do that as, earlier as, sooner as opposed to later. Okay? I do, I do want to try to conclude the meeting, if we can, here prior to 7 o'clock. However, having said that, I realize that there may be some public participation as it relates to this discussion tonight. Do we have anybody? We have not gotten any sheets, anybody from the audience? If not, I would ask then for a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting. So moved?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, so move. Committee of the whole is adjourned. We will resume City Council at 7:05, 7:05.